What the heck? Here, take it off. Where is it? Oh.
It's zip tied. Here, let me see if I can give you a little bit more.
Or just...
There, I gave you a little bit more.
I don't think it needs to be... It needs to be cordless, right?
Or, uh...
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans to gather in the center of our city's government for this meeting tonight. We pray your blessings upon Los Banos, upon each citizen. We pray your blessings upon our council. Give them wisdom as they make decisions for us all that will affect us all. We pray your blessings upon them and their families. We pray your blessings upon each department head as they labor and lead our city to make a better Los Banos. We thank you for your many blessings upon us. We ask that you continue to lead us forward, guide our steps, give us your wisdom, direction, safety, and help, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
If I could have a roll call, please. Here, and we have a quorum. Let's move into item four, consideration of the approval of agenda. Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Lambert?
Take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion passes, thank you. Let's move into item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chambers information table, and I understand we have a presentation first. Want to meet me down there?
Right here, it's good. Good evening, city councilmen and women. I stand before you this evening on a momentous occasion for my family. My father will be turning 100 years old on the 24th of this month, and I am so grateful to be able to come before you to bring your attention to Mr. Oni Bass Senior. I've been a resident here in Los Banos since the 90s. My father became a resident here in 2012. We have other siblings that are here. He's a father of 12, married for over 65 years to one wife with those beautiful children, and I'm so glad to be able to stand before you and to be recognized as 100 years old. That is an outstanding life that he has lived and to have raised his children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren. So I thank you for allowing me to come to acknowledge my father's momentous occasion. Thank you.
Alright, and with that, we have a proclamation. So you want to stand on this side for me? Alright, so whereas the city of Los Banos wishes to extend heartfelt recognition to Mr. Oni Bass Senior, a distinguished resident of our community who celebrates his 100th birthday on January 24th, 2024, whereas Mr. Oni Bass Senior was born on January 24th, 1924, in Pickens, Mississippi, as the fourth child of Mr. and Mrs. Jim Bass. He attended Pickens School District and demonstrated a commitment to education from an early age, and whereas in 1932, he married Thelma Nelson in Canton, Mississippi, and together they were blessed with 12 children. Mr. Bass worked as a farmer for most of his life in Mississippi, contributing to the agricultural heritage of his community, and whereas his dedication to community service was evident through his hopeful endeavors in the community of Canton and Jackson, Mississippi. In 2012, Mr. Bass relocated to our city of Los Banos, bringing with him his legacy of kindness, resilience, and community spirit. Whereas Mr. Oni Bass Senior is a cherished father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and great-great-grandfather, serving as an inspiration to his family and the broader community, and whereas the city of Los Banos is honored to celebrate this momentous occasion and express gratitude for the positive impact Mr. Oni Bass Senior has had on our community, now therefore be proclaimed by the city of Los Banos that January 24th, 2024, is officially recognized as Oni Bass Senior Day in celebration of his centennial birthday. So congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen. I would also like to... Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge Brett Jones, Councilman Brett Jones, forgive me, for all of his support and help in getting this to take place on this day. I am so grateful. Thank you so very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I've been coming to the city council meetings regularly for about a year. I started with one item of concern, and now I am invested in a number of them. Here's what I've taken away from these meetings. The public is given five minutes to present our concerns, opinions, and/or suggestions, at which time the council is not allowed to engage but listen and maybe take notes. I heard the mayor say that he wishes he could respond but cannot because... Because you're not... That's not the forum that this is the presentation in. But here's what you can do. You can act upon our concerns. I sent an email in on January 4th, the day after the last city council meeting, to everybody at this dais here, including Stacy, about the Home Key presentation, and that was two weeks ago, and not one person responded to me. I just wanted to read what I had sent. I would like to voice my appreciation for Councilwoman Lewis's, requesting a Home Key update on the council agenda for 117. I would like to ask that you expand the report to include all measures the city is looking at. We have a valuable resource in Kristy McCammon, who writes all the grants and also deals with them one-on-one. I would expect that Kristy and Stacy would be able to deliver a full and comprehensive report, which will go a long way towards giving the citizens of Los Banos a sense that things are in the works, even if it is not the immediate solution most of us are looking for. I would also like to talk about a timeline for moving the homeless on the rail corridor between Mercy Springs and Place Road to the area adjacent to the new police station. I do see that you have the Home Key update in the agenda, and that is all that you have. You're not addressing any of the other issues, and again, like I said, I got no response from anybody. I do appreciate Councilwoman Lewis unofficially requesting an update. This was a... In fact, this was the first time I've heard Councilman Jones vote no on anything, and it was for updating the public on the Home Key application, which confuses me, as it does not cost a dime. Public updates are free. I've heard Kathy Uli stand up here almost every meeting and ask about the Spay Neuter Clinic, and if the city could put together a commission to look at what can be done about the out-of-control animal population, and the city council has not done that, which again, does not cost the city a dime, it's free. In the January 3rd meeting, Councilwoman Lewis asked for the council to address the public's questions about how the ARPA funds for small businesses were allocated. Instead, this council gave her some song and dance routine, completely avoiding the question by playing around with words like scoring and final audits. The question is simple. When businesses sent in their applications, who determined how much they were awarded and what was that based on? From all the information the public has been able to get, it looks very subjective. Why don't you just come clean, say you screwed up the process, and did not issue the funds as you first presented in the program? Where's the balance of the ARPA funds? We were issued $10 million. We have not used all that money. I believe there is a deadline date to use it. If it's going into the general fund, then just say so. Mr. Mayor, you have mentioned many times to Councilwoman Lewis how she can go directly to staff for answers or clarifications on agenda items. Can I assume the public should be doing the same thing? If we have questions on agenda items that are not clear, are we to call department heads and ask questions, and will they have time to adequately respond, given that we really only have the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday after the packets are posted on Friday? I and many others I've talked to appreciate the fact that she does ask these questions, because no one else does, and since these are concerns or they are consent items and they are not open for public discussion, Councilwoman Lewis, please continue to ask your questions and take items off the agenda, especially the consent agenda, for discussion, because that is the only way this public has any idea of what's going on. I take issue with council members' comments about citizens making inaccurate statements or the newspaper being biased. If you disagree with comments, then present facts that show why they are inaccurate, but trying to berate or intimidate citizens into not showing up or speaking out, well, for most of us here, that does not appear to be working. If anything, it makes the public, us, more suspicious about your agenda. Instead, try engaging us in the process and responding to our concerns to the best of your ability. By working together for a better Los Banos, you will create a more collaborative and less antagonistic city council meeting. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Baller, here from Los Banos. I have a question on your consent agenda. We're putting on-call construction of five different companies at 300,000. I'd like to know, that's 300,000 per each company, or 300,000 divided among the five? Why are we having so many contract out? Our finance department's contract out, our city engineer, public work is contract out. We just recently lost Kim Tomas. Is she going to be... Her position going to be contract out also? It doesn't seem like that creates loyalty. You like to have people who work in Los Banos working for our city, because they give their heart and soul. They're not working for some other business completely out of the city. We are still trying to attract those loyal employees. At least, I would think you would want to. We heard us hiring people when we made everybody at will. It changed the personnel that we do have. I read the compensation philosophy. It kind of goes round and round and round, but it doesn't state what our philosophy is, because we're not adhering to what was written in that folder. I'm just concerned that everything that we do, we hired three tree companies to be on-call, and I think they probably maxed out the amount that you said aside from pruning and shaping all the trees in a certain district that is not covered by lighting and maintenance. But that's coming out of our general fund. Our city is always, when there was a damaged tree, they would remove it, or they would take the branches away or whatever. I think somebody who owns a home should prune the tree that's in front of their yard. It shouldn't be the city, or it should be in the lighting and maintenance district, where they pay into it yearly through their property taxes. Again, I'm a tight one. I see a check register for almost $4 million. We average $2 to $3 million a meeting, which is twice a month. I'm concerned that we're spending either ARPA money or other money. I know, I've told you before, I appreciate what's being done with our parks and rec and the programs that are available for the kids. Helps a lot. It's, you know, part of what Measure H goes to. I am concerned with the expenditures and if we're doing it wisely. Thank you for your time.
I'm totally excited. I can't wait to tomorrow. Tomorrow's a very important training for the point and count to count the homeless, and it is so exciting to go through the training, and then when we do go out very soon to count the homeless, we'll be able to have an accurate count on those individuals that are amongst our city. So, once again, if... You guys probably already know all the dates and times, but I just wanted to express, since I am a resident, that it is a wonderful thing that we'll be able to participate in the homeless count, so we know everything that's going on. There's pointed questions, and then additionally, it does help the city with some extra funds. So, I'm totally excited, as you can tell. Thanks.
Well, I want to express my appreciation for acknowledging that there was no scoring system for the Small Business Assistance Program. Right here, I have all the documentation showing that the supposed general criteria for the program is also not followed. Without a scoring system and without any criteria that was followed, we're left with just opinions determining how grants were awarded. And because grants were based solely on opinion rather than a fair, objective system, you cannot say favorable treatment or discrimination did not occur. If grants were awarded fairly, then those responsible for their determination would publicly explain their decisions. If you can't explain something to the public, then you know what you did or are doing is wrong. However, you have the ability to correct the situation and stop being discriminatory. At the meeting where this program was approved, a councilman stated the following. "In case it's not all used up, I'd like to, if there's leftover funds, do a second funding cycle and have current applicants be eligible." Unfortunately, review of this program has been put off indefinitely, so it does not appear those words will turn into action. There's supposed to be a few million dollars in ARPA funding left, which leaves two options. One, honestly evaluate the program and offer every business the same deals that were made available to just a few. Or option two, avoid discussing this program and continue to engage in favoritism and discrimination. It's your choice of whether you want to be known as someone who does the right thing or not.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Marybel Garcia, speaking on behalf of the Los Banos Downtown Association. Just a quick update. Casino Night, February 24th, has been postponed, but overall, we decided to have it April 13th. So that will be our annual Casino Night, Montegra, at the Crest Event Center, 516 I Street. And overall, in February, we will be having our merchant event meetings every other week, starting February 8th at 8:30. 8:00 AM location will be at Kenny's Stitches, 510 I Street. On February 22nd at 5:30 PM, location will be at the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. And so, this is actually going... We're trying to get everybody together, because we're going to be doing a wine stroll. And so then, so it's really important that people kind of come out to these meetings, so that way we can discuss having the wine stroll for the merchants, and that will be April 27th. But overall, in March, we're also going to be having a St. Patrick's Pub Crawl, the 17th, and that location will be in the downtown Los Banos. And so, we also have partnered with the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. So overall, that's it. Just a quick little update. Please be on the lookout for our next newsletter coming in February, and just thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to address the fact that after the last meeting, I did check out the website, and I was surprised, pleasantly surprised, and curious, when I saw that the release for the advertisement for bid for the animal shelter was out, and it apparently was released on December 22nd. It was posted online, from what I can see, on December 26th, leaving 1, 2, 3 business days before a 10:00 AM mandatory onsite meeting for those who were interested in putting in bids on it. All the other days were holidays when the offices were closed. So, it just... I mean, the timeline could have probably been better. It looks like you're still looking to have the 1,440 square foot shelter, which is not very big, if you think about a typical kind of small three-bedroom, two-bath house. 1,440 square feet isn't that large. It'll be interesting to see how the bids come in, and hopefully, there was enough time over the holidays, three business days, for interested people to get their bid in. Hopefully, we get some good ones, and hopefully, we choose a good one, and hopefully, the shelter turns out nice. I think, you know, we might have put that out there a little bit longer, but wasn't my decision, so hope for the best.
My name is Areli Jimenez, and I don't know if this is the right time to say. I have an ice cream truck, and there is more street vendors selling around where I park at, at the school, and that was my concern. Don't we need extra permits to sell corns, ice shake, ice creams, or anything else? Like, I know that we have to get the health permit, and I don't know how to get through that, or is there any permit that I can get for me to keep on selling those items? Like, to sell those items as well for me on my ice cream truck? I don't know if you guys can answer that question? Okay, so... Okay, yeah, I was like wondering, like, how can I do to get like support on that? Because I'm not selling... I'm not selling, because they are selling things, you know? And I pay for my permits, I pay for everything, so I don't think that that's fair, you know? Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to item six, consideration of the approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 242640, 242925, and the amount of $3,887.53. Second quarter investment report for 2023-24. City Council Resolution Number 6725. Authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., for the wastewater treatment plant irrigation expansion project in the amount of $260,000. City Council Resolution Number 6726. Authorizing the city manager to execute professional services agreements, and the interim public works director city engineer to administer professional services agreements with Vaneer Construction Management, Inc., CCME, Inc., CM Pros, Inc., Garridelli Associates, Inc., and CSG Consultants, Inc., for on-call construction management services in the not-to-exceed amount of $300,000 per year. City Council Resolution Number 6727. Accepting the Crest Hills Sewer Lift Station Rehabilitation Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder, WM Lyles Company. City Council Resolution Number 6728. Adopting a compensation philosophy, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Alright, thank you. Anything from council? Councilmember Lewis?
Excuse me, yes, I'd like to pull item C as in Charles and D as in David.
Let's start with item C, and for this, we'll go to our interim public works director, city engineer, Lemus.
Yes, Councilmember Lewis, you have questions?
Well, could you give us a brief report on what this is about? Because last week, we authorized money for the cleaning of the biosolids in the channels. And now, we're moving into something else. So if you can explain how this connects for the public, and then I'll be able to ask the questions now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So the wastewater treatment plant obviously has had quite a bit of issues due to the fact that we haven't had any of the large items being taken care of for decades now. And so, with this, we're adding capacity by expanding the fields we can release waters into. And so, it has multiple components such as the fact that we're going to be permitting and designing some of the paths to get the water there to those fields. So, really, in the whole, this is to expand our capacity at the wastewater treatment.
Okay, so, at our last meeting, there was an additional request of funding for the biosolids. We had approved that in October, and then there was a comeback to request more funding. And so, this is for irrigation lines that are somehow connected to the sewer system plant. Am I understanding that? Okay.
That's correct.
So, the last project was roughly pretty close to $4 million to do the biosolids cleaning. That would go to Provost and Pritchard and to the other company that we hired. And this project is for $260,000. Can someone tell me, for the entire fund that governs the projects for the sewer plant, how much money do we have in that funding pot?
So let me, first of all, the last contract we were here for was for Synagro to remove biosolids on the channels. These are the actual pond areas.
But that all comes out of the same funding pot?
I believe so.
I guess I maybe need a little clarity as to what you mean by funding pot?
Well, there's money, you said at one of our meetings that when I asked that question about how much money was in it, and you said, "That's not all. There's additional money set aside." So, the city's been collecting money from our taxpayers for years to deal with our sewer system plant. So how much is in that fund?
So this fund is actually funded by the ratepayers. So this is a utility, so there's no taxes in this one. It's the ratepayers. And there are, this, a certain amount of this was already budgeted, so there's no budget increase. The fund equity position in this, that's unrestricted at the moment, is about $16 million. And the, I would say, the surplus or the net increase in this account is roughly about $1,500,000, depending on projects that we're doing. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm trying to just get to a general point to try to understand. You're saying we have $16 million. Is that the funding? I'm calling it a pot because that's my layman's term for it. So is that the funding pot that covers this and other projects that have to do with the sewer plant?
So there's both treatment and collection that is related in this fund, Fund 502, your funding pot 502. And within that, the ratepayers pay a certain amount of money for sewer services. There's also sewer connection fees and other things related to this. But in terms of the unrestricted cash that's in this fund currently, there's $16 million of unrestricted cash. There's also a restricted portion of this that's related to impact fees that also ties into some of the wastewater work. But a lot of that is identified in a nexus and we don't need to get in the weeds with that. But as far as the fund, the fund has $16 million of cash available for these kind of projects. The reason is, is because a lot of projects hadn't been done up to this point. And therefore, that's why that amount of cash is in that fund.
So that unrestricted fund that you're talking about, that would have included the project we've already approved for the biosolid channel that would come out of that? So that was roughly including the fees that we paid to Provost and Pritchard. By my calculation, it was around $4 million.
That was, yes, that was the not-to-exceed amount. It might not be that amount depending on what they find as they go through this project. But there was originally 2.1 million for this that was already budgeted at the very beginning. So, and with that, the budgetary impact on that fund was approximately... It probably took about the fund kind of breaking even for the year. Usually, the funds themselves have some capital reserve built into that because we're building up. Because these kind of projects are expensive and they take a while to build up these funds. It's either that or you issue a form of debt to put the project together. But in terms of the Fund 502, it's a very healthy fund in terms of cash position. But it is that way because these projects are a long time coming.
Okay. And again, there's roughly $16 million in the unrestricted portion. You didn't give it a dollar amount for the restricted. But we've paid out, we're going to be paying out roughly about $4 million from the last project that we heard. So that'll leave us roughly about $12 million in the unrestricted funds. And I understand we're still collecting money on, you know, a regular basis from the ratepayers for these projects out there.
But that's also with the first six months that has already occurred this fiscal year. So it's not going to pen out to 12. It could be less of an impact. But yes, that's what this cash is for, is it's for dealing with issues like this at the wastewater plant in order to make sure, I mean, you need capacity, you need to be able to deal with wastewater infiltrating into the ponds and circulating through.
And there's no question of that. I think the point that I'm trying to bring out is to make it visible to the public, you know, what we're spending, what's in the fund, and approximately what's left over in the fund.
There's a budget, there's a quarterly report that's published, and there's an external audit. So there's different places where the public can find this information.
They can also find it here when I bring it forward.
And of course, when we're talking about it.
Okay. The other question I have is that there were two bids for this project. Does anybody have the amount of the other bid from the other organization? The other company? It's not in the report. Normally, you know, at least we put the dollar amounts in the report of what the two bids are.
I don't think we can. I mean, Bill maybe can help with this. But I, when we selected a committee to analyze these, it was not something that was considered. So maybe Bill can speak to this.
Well, I'm not familiar with this particular project, but it would depend on how the proposal and the request for proposals went out. Whether it was actually a request for proposals or a request for a closed bid. It sounds like it was a request for proposals where qualifications were taken into account, approach to the project were taken into account. And that the proposal in terms of the financial part of it would have been in a totally separate proposal after the Stand Tech was selected as the number one bidder. So we probably don't have the numbers for the other two.
Okay.
So what happens in these, since this is a bid for something that specialized, our proposal that specialized engineering-type services, you create the qualifications and the approach by the proposer before you open the financial bid. If the financial bid is something that has been anticipated by the city, the city goes forward and negotiates that with that person. If that number is not a number that's within the city's framework for providing this project, then it will go to the next highest bidder and open that financial proposal. So this isn't like a closed bid where the lowest responsible bidder is awarded the contract.
All right, thank you for the clarification. That's it.
All right, Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lewis, I just to clarify, I know this is an ongoing project probably for the next six months. We can probably pretty much expect other issues coming forth. Because I'm sure they're going to find other issues, correct?
Absolutely. I mean...
So we're just going to be prepared. I mean, it's an ongoing thing. I drove out there just to see what was going on, you know? It's tremendous.
Yes.
And it's terrible.
Yes, Councilmember Lambert, it's actually very critical work we're doing out there. And we're doing the best possible with the best resources we have. So it's, I assure you, it's good work.
No doubt that that possibly on our next agenda or within the next, we could see something else come across, correct?
Possibly, yes.
Things happen.
Yep.
All right, appreciate it.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I just kind of have a comment. I went out there the other day and checked it out, and it's in bad shape. I mean, it's probably at least 10 to 20 years overdue for a lot of the repairs that are going on. And I think what's most frustrating is we've had the money, we've had staff, but the staff never made it to a priority to address these issues. We've had Greg Wellman, which was supposedly a water expert, even waste treatment plant expert. And not one word out of him. We had Alex Traza, government guy, not one word out of him. We had city engineers prior than the ones that have been here just recently. Not one word. And it's just disappointing when everything now just drops on this council and this staff's hands. And yeah, there's going to be a lot of money spent, and there's going to be a lot more spent because as you go, you find more issues. It's like remodeling a house. If it hasn't been touched in 50 years, you can't just assume it's going to be lipstick and mascara. You might have to do some plumbing, electrical, maybe some foundation, roof, all sorts of things. And as you dig into it, you discover more and more things. So this is probably the fault, the buildup of this, a previous council, previous staff. Deborah, you've been up here 12 years. First time I've ever heard you have any concern about waste treatment. Where were you 12 years ago, five years ago even, on this? So it's disappointing that we got the task of cleaning everything up right now. So, and this is one of many projects in the same way that we're dealing with. So we have a lot of money set aside for these. Now it's time to actually use it. So. That's all, Mayor.
All right.
Yes, I'd like to follow up. I'd like to speak to people here tonight and to our audience by television. It seems like we have some council members that like to point the finger at me. Yes, I've been here 12 years. We've had staff, we've had councils 20, 15, or more years ago. If you want to look at it that way, Councilmember Jones, it didn't do anything. I'm not questioning whether or not something is in need of being taken care of now. What I'm trying to bring forward is the financial responsibility, how we're spending money, how much money is going out, and what we have left. The public, you taxpayers, have the right to know that. So this is the wrong arrow pointing at the wrong direction. I'm not denying the work to be done. I'm not saying that it doesn't need to be done. What I'm saying is, I think you, the public, need to know how your tax dollars are being spent, not what needs to be done, how your money is being spent. And so, I really don't appreciate the daggers that are being thrown at me because I bring forth questions so that you, the public, can be educated about your money. And I will keep doing it because I have people that keep asking me to keep asking about how their money is being spent. This is not about why a project's being done or the need of it to be done. And if that's what council members who are sitting up here think about me, well, I'm sorry that you feel that way. But the public does have a right to know how their dollars are being spent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Lewis, it's funny you talk about money because you skipped over item B, which is our investment balance. At the end of last year, $160 million. So with all the money that's been spent on these projects, we're still up. Go figure. That's all.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to make the quick comment, and again, I could care less about blame. When the public comes, that's what we're here for. I will absolutely take it on the chin, whether I was here or not. I don't care about any of that. You know, I think my focus is, we see the problem, we have a healthy bank account because this was not maintained properly. Don't care whose fault it is. I would much rather people ask questions about, "What are we spending this $2 million on?" than, "Hey, my toilet doesn't flush." So if, you know, and again, members of the council are free to ask questions. I'm never going to deter that. But again, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, we know this is a major neglect. We know you're going to bring it back, you know, to further things. I think we just need to all understand that this is going to be ongoing until we get it up to speed. And when you neglect something for a few decades, it's not going to be settled in one or two council meetings. So thank you for that. Councilmember Lewis, you want to go to item D?
Yes, I would just like our Public Works Director to explain because it was a question of mine as to the need of five different companies. I think we had, let's see, 2467? Seven companies that applied and five were chosen. So, you know, I've not seen anything like this before. So if you could just explain as to why the five companies are needed to help with these various projects that we have here that are listed in the report.
Yes, so the reason for doing that is so it gives us more choices. We have a lot of projects that are happening. And with a cap of $300,000 for an item as such, you know, construction management, that would limit us to doing only that much work. And this is, this, by the way, doesn't have a fiscal impact. I'm sure we explained that. So it's really, when we get a project, a CIP project, if the project has construction management budget, then we're going to be able to choose one of these companies to help us with that. So we choose multiple because we have a lot of work.
Okay, so could you explain to the public what CIP is?
Well, it's basically public work. Public work that is being done through our own budget, through grants, through multiple agencies that fund us. So it's worth being done by the government. It's not private work.
Councilmember Lewis, I can also assist. I was able to help with this staff report. So CIP, Capital Improvement Projects, it's our projects that have longer lifespans that cost over $5,000 in this case, obviously significantly more than that in some cases. And so, on-call, Construction Management Services, I think the intention is to really be able to have agencies on board that are readily accessible and expedite those projects to get going, to have those experts available to us in order to make improvements to, I think specifically, buildings and facilities. That's really been a focus of this year, and I know moving forward as well with a lot of aging facilities that we have.
Okay, so I assume these various agency, although... Okay, so I assume these various agency, although they may have similar qualifications, some of them have specialty qualifications for certain areas that the city will need help in?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. And then, excuse me, the $300,000 per year is what we'll spend, no matter what agency we hire, it's, you know, I think there was a concern by the public whether or not it was going to be $300,000 per, or it's just, that's what we're going to spend if we hire three, or if we hire five, it'll be $300,000 a year?
Per.
Or it's going to be per, per organization?
But again, I suppose that was one of the questions the public had.
Because it says per year in the report.
It's per agency. That is the maximum we can use an agency, a certain company, we can use them up to $300,000 each. However, again, this does not have a fiscal impact, meaning it's not out of our budget.
Okay, so the report says the agreement by both and each party shall continue in full force and, and in effect for three years, within the next, not to exceed the amount of $300,000 per year. So again, this is for each company that you hire?
Yes. Again, it does not come out of our budget. It's dependent on the project having a budget for that, for that particular item, which you could say every project that we do would.
So, so it's on an as-needed basis? Mr. Lemus is describing is, so there could be some years that, that no funding is, is used on, on a particular consultant, and there could be years that it's up to $300,000. So it just really depends on the city's need as far as number of projects, expenditures related to those, as you said, specialized services. So other on-call contracts that we've had, on-call treaty, on-call engineering, those, those services. So in some cases, it, it may come close to its maximum, in some cases it may not have any amount, it's really going to be based off of task orders. So when you see a number like $300,000, that's not to say that the city has $300,000 times five consultants to spend this particular year, it's that they could spend up to $300,000 which each, with each of those consultants. So for example, they may be one particular big project that's $250,000, right? That's going to go to a single consultant, another consultant may only get $30,000, and for that year, the city may expend $280,000 as part of this contract. So I hope that helps.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing you say is, is based on the contract? And the contract could be up to $300,000 a year?
Per agency, yes. And so each, with each project the city at Public Works is pursuing, there'll be what's called a task order associated with it, and that will identify a do not exceed amount, and the total of, of any of those task orders per agency can't exceed more than $300,000 per, per year.
So if there's no fiscal impact, then how does it, where does it get paid out?
So when the task order is generated, that's, so if it was a task order to improve, say, the police annex or Parks and Rec facility, or any of these buildings, or City Hall, that's where that, wherever that fund is associated with that building. So say it's a community center, it would probably be out of the community center fee, or perhaps general fund, perhaps Measure H, and that's where that funding would, would be initiated out of.
So as long as it's within the budget of that particular fiscal year?
Absolutely.
That's why you're saying there's no fiscal impact?
Yes.
Right, and, and there could be, like, a funding source relating to a specific project, and this project might actually span several different funds for, especially like some of the street projects and, and other things like that. So that's why, nothing, nothing has been budgeted for these yet. They, they, they just, we just needed to have this over the next period of time in order to execute these projects going forward.
Okay, well, I, I just hope whatever fund budget it comes out of, you know, based on the things that we're doing, and it hasn't been budgeted for in this fiscal year, that, you know, it's not going to exhaust something, because something critical may come up, and then that fund budget is exhausted, and this project needs to happen, then that means that, you know, it has to go to the general fund to be funded. Okay, thank you.
Now I'm getting my questions for answering, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, do we want to vote on C and D first? Do it all at once? Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Jones? So moved. Do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
I have a second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Let's move into item seven, Home Key Grant Program update, and for this, we'll go to Community and Economic Development Director, Suzanne Als.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So based on the direction from the City Council, staff was directed to come back with a Home Key Grant Program update. And as you may recall, the City Council authorized staff to submit a Home Key Project application, and that was in May of 2023. The state of California released approximately, they provided a notice of funding availability for $736 million for the Home Key Program Round Three. Of that $736 million, the San Joaquin region, which consists of the counties of Fresno, Kern, Kings, Madera, Merced, San Joaquin, Stanislaus, and Tulare, were allocated just a little over $43 million. And so the city of Los Banes, after receiving authorization from the City Council, staff with a co-applicant submitted an application for $15 million to the Department of Housing and Community Development. This was for a hotel conversion for the renovation and beautification of the La Plaza Inn located at 2169 East Pacheco Boulevard. The project consisted, and consists of converting the existing hotel into 60 units of permanent supportive housing for homeless and chronically homeless individuals in Los Banes. Currently, the state has provided an update. We, the city of Los Banes, have not been notified. We are in pending status on whether we will be awarded or not. We, we have not been told whether we have been awarded or not. And what the state has released is that they've received nearly $1.27 billion in applications for the Home Key Project, and that the state continues to review applications and grant awards will be announced on a rolling basis until all the funds have been exhausted. What we do know is that the San Joaquin region has already exhausted through that $43 million. So the regional pot, we know, is unavailable. So we are still hoping that within what is still available, that the city of Los Banes, which that's about $217 million, that we're still in the running. And so we're just waiting to see if we will be awarded. And that concludes my report.
Questions from council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. This is, of the seven, $217 million left for the state to distribute for the Home Key, and, and we're still in the pending status. Has there been any money awarded out of that, out of that amount that's left over to any other regions or any other cities? Or all of that has, is what's left over, and they're waiting to decide how they're going to distribute it?
Yes, yes, you're absolutely, so the latter.
Yeah.
So the $217 million is what is left over right now that has not been awarded, and we're just waiting to see. And I'm looking at Kristi McCamden, our housing program manager, because she checks basically on a daily basis, the Department of Housing and Community Development, to see if they've announced any awards and where, what our status is.
And they, they've not set a deadline date at all as to what they might, when they might distribute this money? I mean, they haven't made a decision, but sometimes the state won't make the decision, but they said, our deadline is on this date, and, you know, it's like they'll move up to that date before they say anything.
And you're absolutely right. And the state of California did say that they would be announcing awards in October, and they blew right past that deadline. And then they started, it was about November-ish or so, that they started to release awards, and then they released the last round in about December. And then when we inquired where, where we stood and our status, they responded that mid-January, they would be rolling out more awards. We are now in mid-January, and they have not rolled out any more awards yet. So we have been in contact. We are also, would be looking at changing potentially our co-applicant as well. And would be working with HCD on that, whether we would need to do that.
All right, so I guess it's just a wait-and-see game at this point. Thank you for the report.
And what else? No? So I'll just chime in real quick. So Stacy, thank you for doing this. One thing I want to make sure we don't do, and I am familiar with grants, is if we pick up the phone and we bug the state of California 100 times, I can assure you where application's not going to go, right? And it's probably not going to go in the due process, right? The other thing too, is I did hear a, you know, a comment in the public forum that these updates are free. This is a 176-page agenda, and you're not free, right? We, we pay you to be here, and Kristi to be here, and I know the time, effort, and energy it takes to track down people, calls, emails, all that. So again, I appreciate, again, this, this entire thing. The other thing I'm going to tell you is just the reality of it, is this is a state problem, and we're trying to address it at a local level. And I don't know how many of you have visited your governor's office, or your state senator, or your state assembly member, but they're going to get things done far more than we are. And, you know, again, I don't want to just throw money at a problem. I was very optimistic when I took this position about what I could and could not do as far as with something like this. The reality of it too is, we can only help, help those that want the help, and we are seeing it. We have seen people that we have housed who turn right, right around and go back to the trail. So it, it just happens, we, that's just the nature of this. So again, I'm, I'm totally optimistic, I'm going to, you know, keep my head above water, but again, you know, this is just something that we're not going to solve in the state of California from this, from this dais right here. It, it is what it is. But thank you for, for again, all the, all the effort that goes into that. I just want to make sure that we're not lighting a fire under the state, and they're like, hey, look, it's Los Banes, I'm calling, you don't answer it. So, but thank, thank you for that. Councilmember Lambert?
Just real fast, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Again, like I've said in the past, it's, it's not something that we just look over. We don't just look over, we, we discuss all the time. When we do get the information, we will get the information out as soon as we get information, I'm sure. But I wish we could wave a wand and, you know, make it right. But unfortunately, it's just something we can't do. But I promise you, when I get information, I will relay information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Oh, yep, Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Well, I, I hope we all get the information at the same time. And I, I've said this a number of times, sitting up here, having worked in the mental health system. The bigger problem is, and I think the mayor has acknowledged this, is that the state of California has kind of weaned itself off treating people who have mental health problems. They've moved them out of state hospitals, closed state hospital beds down to forensic beds. We have maybe a couple of state hospitals that are taking people who have chronically mental illnesses in the state of California. But whether you have a mental illness that's genetic, and you've been predisposed by family, whether you are on drugs, or whether you're on alcohol under the Letterman-Petras Short Act, if you're a danger to yourself or others, you can, you, you need to be conserved and put into treatment. It's unfair to let people live out on the street, whether they've taken these drugs themselves or not, that's not the point. They're a danger to themselves, and they're a danger to society. And I think it's appalling that the state of California has defunded mental health to the point where it is now, and people are not getting the treatment that they need to. We need to get back to the days where we have conservators working, and the courts are putting people back in treatment and keeping them there until they're reconstituted again, enough to live in society and be somewhat healthy, and not be a burden on society, and not be dangerous to people who live in society and hurting themselves. I, I think it's really cruel to let people just live out on the street like an animal and not give them the treatment that they should get in order to live a more healthy life. They may not ever be like a normal person who holds a job, and some of them can get there. I had clients that were that way, and it took a lot of work to get them there. But what we do now is inhumane. And some organizations say that it's inhumane to put people in hospitals and treat them. But to me, the lifestyle that they're living now is inhumane, and, and I think it's appalling.
All right, thank you. And, and I will say too, that again, it's not that the state's not going to do what we want, so we're just going to give up on the problem. That's absolutely not, you know, the issue. I think the thing too is, we're very quick, and I've seen it in my, you know, careers, we're quick to catalyze, categorize homeless as one thing, one type of person, and that's not the case at all. Because, you know, the flip side of the mental health issue is, we have people who choose to be on the street, we have people that choose to victimize other people and choose to use drugs, and those people don't need a mental hospital, they need a jail. And so, you know, again, we don't write the laws of the state to, to dictate that, but, you know, again, not everybody falls into one, one category, so. We are, recommendations, information only, no action to be taken. All right, thank you. Let's move into item eight, Appointment of Commissioners to the Following Commissions. We're going to go through these individually, so let's start with 8A. So 8A is the Airport Advisory Commission. There are three vacancies, two two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2025, one unexpired term expiring December 31st, 2024. And we're going to go individually. The application for the first candidate is Denise Tarka. And this was a commission with myself, Mr. Lemus from Public Works, and Councilmember Begonia. Do I have a motion from council? Just Denise, we're going to go one by one. Councilmember Begonia?
Do I just make a motion to appoint Denise Tarka to the Airport Advisory Commission?
All right. I believe it's the two, two-year term. Yeah, 2025, yeah. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right. Let's go to Dennis Reed. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Begonia?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dennis Reed to the Airport Advisory Commission.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Let's move on to Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. There are two vacancies. This one was myself, Councilmember Lewis, and then we had, I believe it was Kim Tommas sat on the, the panel for that. So this is two, two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2025. So on this, we will start with Herman Jackson. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Herman Jackson to the position of Measure H Committee, Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right. Let's move on to Kathy Ballard. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lewis?
Point Kathy Ballard to the Measure H Oversight Committee?
Any second. Okay, hearing none, move on from that one. Go on to Measure P Committee. We have two, three-year terms expiring December 31st, 2026. This is myself and Chief Raina. We have one applicant receive Harriet Schott. Oh, oh. Oh, I'm looking at this one. Yep, you're right, you're right. Sorry about that. We're going to go to Parks and Recreation Commission, two, two vacancies. This is myself, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Lambert, and Joe Heim. We have, the first one is John Spivak. Do I have a motion for Mr. Spivak? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion for, to appoint Commissioner John Spivak.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Second half.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. All right, motion passes. Then we have Jerry Blevins. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion also for Jerry Blevins for appointing Commissioner.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right. And then we have the Tree Commission. We have three vacancies, three two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2025. And we have Lawrence Byers. This is myself, Councilmember Jones, and Joe Heim. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Lawrence Byers to the Tree Commission.
All right, thank you for that. Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Councilmember Lambert and Lewis? Do you have a vote? All right. Let's move on to item nine, the Advisement of Public Notices. We have two reports. We'll go to Community and Economic Development Director, Suzanne.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first item is for a site plan and a final development plan for, this is located on Snow Goose. This will be for 25 townhomes within a private gated community. This is located across the street from Pacheco High School, right next to our memorial park. And then the second item is for a conditional use permit for a commercial storage container for the fund zone located at 525 I Street. The public hearing will be held Wednesday, January 24th, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. And we'll move on to item 10, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Just like to give my condolences. We had a member of the community who fortunately passed away. He was the manager of the local fair, and I would just tell you, just from the city's standpoint, he was just a great partner to work with, absolutely phenomenal, really appreciated him and all the work that he did for us. He was actually very helpful and very supportive of our most recent project, the Powell Ballfield, which is now off of Noah Jones Park, right there by the fairgrounds. And so without his support and his help with that, you know, that project wouldn't have been as smooth. So just big condolences to him and his family. It's a big loss for us as a community, and he was, worked for the county, and he, him and I, I will tell you, one thing that I really enjoyed about him is every time we started our phone call, it always started with a laugh, and it ended with a laugh. You know, so to our friends at the county, you know, they're, they're hurt right now at the moment with his loss, and, and I know us here at the city, we really appreciated him and really enjoyed working with him. And I just met him about a year ago, and our, our relationship has just been great. I know our Parks and Rec Director, Joe Heim, has, you know, worked with him quite a bit on a lot of different things, and he was just nothing short of a, a great person and a great partner. So on behalf of the city, he is sorely missed for sure. My condolences to him and his family.
All right. And we'll move into item 11, Report Update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, Measure V Committee, and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Los Banas Downtown Property and Business Improvement, LBP bid. So we'll start first with Councilmember Lewis. Do you have anything on the, or control?
Thank you. Just an announcement, we had a news announcement yesterday that San Joaquin Valley Air received a $56 million grant from the Federal Highway Administration, and this is to develop a high-powered electric vehicle charging stations at two key locations here in San, San Joaquin Valley. One right here in our area in Gustine, off Highway Five, and the other one in Kern County in Taft. And California on Interstate Five and our commerce is one of the busiest highway corridors in the United States. This is one of the largest grants that California has received from the Highway Commission, and it's the third largest grant in the state, in the United States. So I, I really give a lot of kudos to our CEO. He's the president of the different air districts in the state, in the state of California, and he works really hard with EPA, with CARB in our, in the state of California, to make sure that grant money is coming down to help our farmers, to help people in our community who are disadvantaged, and to help just everyday people with things that we need to start converting to, because it's becoming mandated to have our, our state of California more electrified. So there's grant monies out there for various reasons. You just need to go to valleyair.com and look them up, especially in regards to people who still have wood burning fireplaces. There's grant money to convert your fireplace from wood burning to either electric or gas. So I'm really proud of the organization for being awarded this grant. It's certainly going to help with large transportation vehicles, to have these stations where they can charge up their vehicles and move on and get commerce moving in the state of California and around the United States. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go next to the P bid downtown? Okay, all right. So our MCAG meeting is tomorrow, so I really don't have anything else. Tomorrow night, I'll be hosting the City-County Relations Dinner after the MCAG meeting. Peninsula Clean Energy, again, we have an upcoming meeting, so I don't really have anything on that. And I believe that's it. So let's move on to item 12, City Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Jones? Okay. Councilmember Lewis? All right, Councilmember Lambert? Councilmember Begonia? Strike four, all right. All right, and then I'll go last. So first thing I want to share, super excited about this. I saw this on social media. To our Los Manas Veterans, a Veterans Services Representative will now be at the Los Manas Veterans Memorial Hall four times a month to assist veterans with various needs such as filing, filing services, connected disability claims, pension claims. A ton of resources are available, so I'm super excited about that. If you want to learn more, go to losmanasveterans.org, or you can call 209-704-5301. Again, I saw that, and I wanted to share that with, with everybody. I had a, a pretty cool thing happen to me today. I was, I let a few kids be mayor for a day. So I had some kids from Los Manas Unified School District come in today, their, their adult program, came in, had a meeting with me in here, got to sit in the chair, it was great. And so I'm looking forward to, to posting some stuff about that. And then the last thing I kind of want to share is, the way that our meetings have been going in my time in office, just one thing that I really think would help every side of the aspect of whatever issue is, please learn how your government operates. Please take a civics class, please learn how we do business, because again, we don't make the rules on how we do things with the Brown Act and with public comments. We can't get into a dialogue, why we have to go by an agenda. The other thing too is, there's nobody that sits up here that prepares a staff report. We don't call and do the bids for the animal shelter. We're not the ones that do that. We take the information in and we vote on that. And so we get that information the same time as anybody else does. And so when you ask me, or you ask another council member about, why are you guys doing this, why are you guys doing that? We get the information the same time you do. And so our job is to vote on that policy. So what, kind of the regular way of doing business is, you would call me and say, hey, I don't like this, I want you to vote no, I want you to vote yes, this is my opinion. That's normal kind of government work. And so I think that's something that, again, just kind of needs to be shared, because I, I don't see that happening a lot, so. Other than that, that's, that's all I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, do I have a second? All right, I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:13.